Well, I could, a couple of other opportunities to see these candidates and others sponsored by the Yuba Center Chamber of Commerce, Yuba Center Farm Bureau, and the Appeal Democrat. One of the sessions is coming up this Wednesday, and that's for Yuba County Supervisors District 1 and 5, and that'll be from 6 to 8 on Wednesday at the Yuba County Government Center in the Boardroom. And then, coming up on Thursday of this week, we'll have these same candidates you see tonight, will be appearing from 6 o'clock until 8 o'clock at the Yuba City City Hall Council Chambers. And then, the final one is for Senator County District Attorney and State Assembly, District 3, and that will be coming up on April 30th, from 6 until 8 also at Yuba City City Hall. So lots of opportunities to see these and other candidates, and I certainly appreciate all the organizations that are providing these opportunities. So if we could have your attention as we go into the final segment here. The question and answer period is going to be conducted by our two panelists, and there will be questions from the Candidate Forum Debate Committee, and then, at the end, there will be about 20 minutes or a little bit more of questions from the audience that haven't already been asked by the committee. So the panel will be drawing each question at random from that quote basket they have, and they'll either ask specific candidates as they go down the line equally, or a few of the questions they may ask to the entire panel. Now, we have, at the end, each will have, of course, one minute to answer each question. At the end, each candidate will be given up to two minutes for opposing statement. We would like to ask, please, I know that you're going to feel like applauding certain answers, certain candidates, whatever it may be, but we would really love for you to hold your pause until the end of the forum tonight, that way we can get in more questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul and Pat to go ahead and begin the questions of the candidates.
This is for all of you. What one ordinance or policy would you change to bring more jobs to the area? Dan.
Policy that I would add right away is working closely with the Economic Development Corporation and the other regional economic development coordinators in the area to develop the jobs, economic development plan that we could all work around. We would include businesses in developing that plan, as well as the Yuba Center Chamber of Commerce, and bring businesses to the table and listen to what the needs are of businesses, and then put a plan together that we could not only work the plan, but then, I mean, create the plan, but then go ahead and work that plan. So that would be my first objective.
I don't know that the county has a business license requirement. I know they didn't a few years ago. The city has one. I think the city should eliminate theirs, and if the county is contemplating creating one, I would be against that. Businesses should not be paying additional taxes. We're lucky to have them. There should be no business license, in my opinion.
Nantorick, we have no license. Don't claim our license. What I'd like to see is environmental. We need to work with our legislators to lessen up the environmental. There's so much environmental red tape. Anytime anybody wants to do anything, they have to fight the state, and there's so many rules on this environmental, it just absolutely kills our economy.
Yes, thank you. Ordinance change. I want to go by my experience. My experience is on the Planning Commission, and we had a sign issue come across where there's a shell station out on 99, and they wanted to apply for a big, I call it a total pole sign. And in the ordinance, it was just a small monument sign. A monument sign is good for around town, but when you're going 65, 70 miles an hour like people do on Highway 99, a big total pole sign with big numbers and letters, I mean, that should have been approved without going to the Planning Commission.
Well, I think the question was, what ordinance would we like to see to help business? First of all, my opinion on that is, we need to reduce the ordinances that we have, because I think that's the biggest part of the problem that we have, is too much regulation, and so I'm not really in favor of a new ordinance. I think we need to get rid of some of the ordinances that we do have.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next question will start with Rick Dice, and it's just for the one individual, for Rick. If there is an agenda item that would benefit your district but would be detrimental to the rest of the county in the past, how would you vote and why?
I would vote for the entire county. You know, we elect supervisors in districts, which is a good thing, because, you know, the city elects people at large, and that requires a lot more money. You have to cover larger areas. So I'm for electing people in districts, but we all know that a supervisor is elected to represent all the people, so I would be doing what's best for the entire population, as I, best as I saw it.
The next question is for Larry Munger. What is your position on Sutter Point development in South Sutter County?
Since the people voted this in, I've been for it all the way. We're down to one developer, but they're starting to come back now, and I think this is going to be an economic boom down the road for us, as far as jobs, and it's in a good place, proximity of the airport, Highway 85 and 99 and 70.
This question is for Mike Geraldo. The Lincoln East Pacific Plan areas in the county that was approved by the city, what do you believe the county's role is or should be in development, rural, in the Yuba City sphere of influence?
Well, I remember that got passed, and, okay, I remember that got passed, and there was a green belt around it, and they wanted to build high-rise and actually move the center of the town, it looks like, over there. And it looks like an Agenda 21, type, pack 'em and stack 'em, you know, cover more of the footprint of our land, and I don't think it's a good idea, you know? I don't think it's a good idea. I think we need to stay small. I like staying small. I like a small town, you know? So I'm more for a small town and seeing farmland around our area. And that's a beautiful thing about what we have, is the farmland around us. It just keeps shrinking, more and more, so I'd like to protect it. Thank you.
This question's for all of you, but I'll start with John Dukes. Do you believe supervisors should receive the same pension, health care, and other benefits as county employees?
Well, I do believe that that is a benefit of part of this office. It is something that is important, but when it comes to voting for them, it seems to be a little bit self-serving. And so perhaps there should be two different plans, one that is put in place for the supervisors by a commission, rather than voting it on for ourselves, and then have us responsible for the plan for the employees.
Dan?
I guess my feeling on that is that the voters of Sutter County should be able to decide that. As far as getting benefits, you know, some people require them and then others don't. It is a job that they're working hard on, and if they require the benefits, then they should be able to go ahead and receive them.
I have a little bit up in the air about the health benefit. If someone really needs it, it might be okay. I'm diametrically opposed to continuing to give pensions to our supervisors. It's a classic conflict of interest. I don't know how it ever came about, but you can't have the people getting the benefit voting on it, and it needs to be eliminated. And if elected, it'll be one of my first priorities to eliminate that benefit for supervisors.
I'm for the benefits. I work full-time with the county, basically. A lot of the benefits, you have to participate, everybody 100 percent. It's like the health, you can't hold out and go on your own. You can, and try to collect the money and then go off by your own insurance. You either have to bond the program or not, and that's for everybody.
Yes, benefits for supervisor. Well, I thank God that I'm lucky enough that my real estate pays my way. I'm not doing this job for the money. I'm not. I'm not doing it for the benefits. I pay $420 a month for my home medical. The question is, should a supervisor get the benefits? You know, I think that they should pay into it, you know? I think that they should pay into it. The retirement, it's a hard thing, because some supervisors that are running, I can see that they work very hard, it's their only source of income, but when they have two sources of income, you know, like me, I could do without it, you know? I could seriously do without it, but some people that run for supervisor need it. But then there's some double dipping that goes on, so it's a hard thing to take away the benefit when somebody's working so hard. I need to think about it more. For myself, I could pass on the benefits. Thank you.
Okay. John, you started that round, so we'll go to Dan with this question. Annually, unemployment in the By County area remains near 20 percent when you include those who have given up looking for work. What can you, as a supervisor, do to increase the potential for job opportunities in your district and in the county?
The new number, I think, that came out today, was 16.1 percent is stagnant in unemployment, and I think if you count all the numbers, it's a lot higher than 16.1 percent. This is something that I've been dealing with my whole career, and as I mentioned in my introduction, I've worked with training people to go to work for employers where there are jobs and where there is a need for employment. In this county, there actually are job openings in a lot of vocational fields that are available right now, and people are undertrained, and we need to work on training. I would like to work closely with school districts moving up, and working also with the Chamber of Commerce, as I mentioned earlier, and the Economic Development Corporation to create a plan to tackle our unemployment problem and work with people. I heard the other day when I went to a forum that unemployment's really hard for people who are on long-term unemployment. I think we need to address the issues for people on long-term unemployment as well. Some people have worked at companies for a really long time, and they need further support to get jobs. So this is one of my primary missions, and I will tackle that right away, working on a plan and getting on, working on unemployment.
I have a firework business, and it tears me up when people come up to me and ask for work, because I work alone. There's a dire need for jobs in this community, but my primary emphasis in my candidacy is number one--
Excuse me, Rick, I'm sorry. That was just for Dan. It wasn't a--
I thought it was everyone.
Yeah, okay.
I have that question for everybody, so we'll start with you, Rick. This question is regarding to SB 1, Senate Bill 1, by Steinberg. Senate Bill 1 has been shelved and delayed, but ultimately is going to pass in the form of a Jerry Brown law, from what I understand, this afternoon, actually. How will SB 1, or Soviet-style governance, impact Sutter County?
Can you give any more specifics on what it's going to cover?
Well, this is going to bring about regionalism, and regionalism with eminent domain rights, so that any bureaucrat can claim by eminent domain the property of private property for the county.
Thank you. I was a political science major in the 70s, and regionalism was a big thing back then. It was the, what everyone was talking about and promoting. I'm not a believer in it. I'm a believer in regional, local. My political battles always were local, and I'm diametrically opposed to that. I think as a county, we need to buckle down and take care of ourselves first, and while we're going to need help, you know, we're going to be getting federal funds, state funds, and other funds, we need to concentrate on running the show ourselves and keeping the tentacles of government out as much as we can. Thank you.
I'm definitely opposed. Most of Steinberg's laws are nothing that I support, as Steinberg's just on the other side of the fence, as far as I'm concerned. This is just one more step towards the state taking over our planning and what we do within our communities, and so basically, I'm really against their planning, and I think, tell us what to do.
Well, I tell you, SB 1, communism, Steinberg, he's a communist. I went in there and listened to him, and he doesn't even have an American flag in his office in there, and it's not good. It's, SB 1 is a land grab, where they're going to take our property away. I own property, and it's only here in California. So we've got to get involved in the city council meetings, the board of supervisors meetings, and you've got to write letters, you've got to get involved. When we get in office, you can't just put us in office and forget about us. You've got to knock on our door, you've got to call us, you've got to help us write letters. You've got to be active with us. Otherwise, if you don't, they're going to take over this town. So you've got to get involved. Okay? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, there's been a lot of talk about Agenda 21, and this is a prime example of what Agenda 21 really is. And I do not support, as Larry mentioned, anything that Steinberg does. I usually am just the opposite of what he is supporting. We don't need them telling us how to do our land use in this county, and we need to push back. Now that this has been signed into law, and it sounds like it was this afternoon--
No, actually, it stalled, as they say. Through the efforts of actually this tea party, it was stalled at the governor's desk, but it's now, the governor's has it under control, and he's going to bring it back and resurrect it in some other form.
Now is the time for us to really push back against this before this actually gets signed into law, and that takes all of you in this room to help doing that, because just as supervisors, we're one voice against that, but we need the community to stand up and say, no, we don't support this.
Definitely opposed, and for a lot of the same reasons you've already heard, but I just want to add one more thing. I think that we should work really hard to elect officials at the state level and at the federal level that can speak up for our rights and go against this type of legislation, because it's absolutely wrong. Thank you.
Okay, we started with Rick, so we'll start with Larry. We won't start with you. This question is just for you, okay? What do you see as the main problem facing Sutter County government, and what will you do to address this problem?
Why not? Still budgets. The county has not come back, like a lot of your counties down in the Bay Area and like Sacramento, Placer. We need to still be diligent, we still need to be very conservative, we still need to consolidate the different departments, and keep within our budget, not raise taxes.
This question's for all of you, starting with Mike Geraldo. What is your position on the board of supervisors allowing the city to expand its sphere of influence without a vote of the citizens of that area?
You know, I am not for losing any ground in this county at all. I am not for, the city already has their sphere of influence to work with, and for them to broaden their property out further, why should the county give up any more space? Or take any land away from the county? You live in the county, you want to stay in the county, you know? People are happy that have septic tanks, they have wells. I don't know, some of the wells are getting low, but there, I think they're making money. So no doubt, I'm against the city taking land away from the county.
The sphere of influence is basically, just to identify what that is, is from Bog Road on the south, to Peace Road on the north, to Township on the west, and basically the river. There's still a lot of land that is not developed. The actual, the city limits are actually well within that area, and so there's still a lot of land that needs to be developed, and that's why the sphere of influences are put into place, is to protect our agriculture, so that we don't expand out into those areas. There is a move currently to expand south of Bog Road because a big box store, Costco, wants to come in, and so there's a lot of pressure pushing to do that. I'm not in favor. I still think that we have a lot of area within the sphere of influence before we go outside that boundary.
I think that, sorry, I think the sphere of influence being, as John mentioned, there's still a lot of room to work within that sphere. That sphere of influence was determined by a lot of planning and pre-decision that was done already, and I think that as long as we have room to expand in that sphere of influence, and as long as we do it correctly without taking up prime, or productive agricultural land, that we should proceed with working with the sphere of influence in the city and the county.
I would agree. People, the county people don't have a say in that, because the county and the city signed a reciprocal tax agreement back in 2000, and that precipitated the Walton annexation. Myself, my wife, and friends defeated the annexation with the city back in 2004, because the city offered us services they didn't have. Where I come from, that's known as lying. And so we fought it, and we had to go door-to-door. We gave us three weeks to get 25 percent of the registered voters, some of whom were moved away, some deceased, but we got it done. We took it to a vote, and we defeated the city 62.9 percent to 37.1. We were quite proud of what we did. Walton, the people, one of my opponents, Mr. Dukes, was one of the advocates of the Walton annexation. They were promised police protection in 2000. It's 14 years later, they still don't have it. The city has no right to expand until they can take care of what they already have, in my opinion.
Sphere of influence. Sphere of influence is one thing. John mentioned, we have Oak Township and Peace Road, and then this area, this is the area for the city to plan, the sewer, water for the future. And when I first came on the board, there was a development that was supposed to be out on Lincoln Road, just 1,500 acres, and Orange County Development Company came up here, and that's why we basically did a sphere, so as to stop these companies from coming in here and buying up our farmland, which is cheap here compared to Orange County, and keep the growth within the city, and let the city do the planning at that time.
Okay, this question is for John. As a supervisor, would you have the authority to stop federal or state agents from harassing or threatening Sutter County citizens?
Wow, that's a loaded question. We are there to serve our citizens, and we are that first line of defense for our citizens. I don't believe that the federal government has the right to come in and tell us how we need to do things. And I'd like to also just take a part of my time here to respond to Rick's comment about the annexation that he tried to stop, or he did stop down in South Yuba City. The agreement with the county was that we would take over police services when that small finger was annexed in. He fought to stop that, and that's why we still don't have the police services, other than the county servicing that area in the South Yuba City right now. So part of your plan to cut the services actually made it harder for those people to get the services they were promised.
This is for Dan Flores. Who do the supervisors work for, and should county employees be allowed to direct the supervisors' actions?
The supervisors work for the constituents of the county, the residents of the county, and it's the duty of the supervisors to keep informed and to inform the county residents on what's going on, and that's who the supervisors work for.
This one is for Rick. A recent study indicates the poverty rate for senior citizens is increasing in Sutter County. Please explain what you believe should be done to help seniors.
I think we should do everything we possibly can. One thing we can do is to make sure that we keep government out of their pockets. I hate to keep coming back to the same topic, but one of the reasons we fought so hard for the annexation was people knew that it would be more expensive to live in the city, and we'd be going door-to-door and asking elderly person how they felt about the annexation. They said, well, how do you feel? They were trembling. I said, well, I'm opposed to it, and we got quite a few hugs. You know, fixed income is fixed income, any way you slice it. And other things we can do is just to make government more amenable to them, to where we really meet their needs. Maybe we could have a set of requiring dog licenses for seniors. We could give them some special benefits. I mean, we should be honoring these people for what they did. Privates raised, you honor anyone with a gray head, anyone who's a senior citizen's a hero, in my opinion.
This question's for all of you. We'll start with Mr. Munger. As a supervisor, what would your, what will be your position in approving or rejecting staff requests to accept grant money if such grants are predicated on United Nations Agenda 21 for sustainable development principles?
First of all, I'd see what kind of strings are attached. If there's nothing attached, like, a lot of people think that bike lanes have a lot of attachment, but the only attachment they've got with the bike lanes is maintenance. I don't see a problem with that, because, dude, the fact is, if we build it out of our own money, we're still going to have to maintain it. Also, if you get a grant to do a project around, I'd say, safety around a school, all those different particular things, we're going to have to maintain them anyway. But if there's any strings attached, I'd definitely take a look at it and not accept it.
You want to go next?
Okay. I've got a little experience of that on the Planning Commission with regards to transitional housing. Transitional housing, the county wanted to have transitional housing in R1, R2, R3, and it was by R4, by use permit. And I asked the planning director, Lisa Wilson, why do we have to have transitional housing in R1, R2, R3? She says, if we have that in place, then we can apply for a grant. Wow, that's what we need, is another grant. So, you know, I started my business without a grant. I believe in living within my means, you know? Whether I drive an older car, which I do in 2000, and I live modest, we need to live modest within our means. It's not all about taking grants. So I'm not for all these grants. Bicycle lanes, gee, I don't know how many people ride a bicycle. Our roads, our roads in this area are pretty bad. It's a shambles, but I'm against grants, you know, unless they're for bridges, infrastructure, or something big like that. Thank you.
To be specifically to the question here, is if the grant has strings tied to Agenda 21, then I would oppose it. The other grants that either the city or county are using are the tax dollars that you have paid in, either to the federal government or to the state government, and it is our responsibility as elected officials to get as many of those tax dollars back to our community, so that we don't have to come to you and say, we've got to raise your taxes, because we decided not to take these grants that were out there for us to use. Just because it's a grant does not mean it's tied to Agenda 21. There are some that are, and it's my, I've always said to staff at the city anyhow, that if you're going to bring a grant to us, I want you to investigate, make sure that there are no strings attached to this, that do have those types of things hidden in the language of it. Thank you.
Grants with Agenda 21 items, we need to take a look at all of the grants that come through, and if they have Agenda 21 items, then see if actually we, from what I understand, there's actual possibility of being able to remove some of those items and then still be able to receive the grants, which is, John mentioned, that some of the grant funds are funds that we've paid into the city, I mean, paid into, so we'd rather have those funds come here than somewhere else if they don't have the Agenda 21 items attached. I agree that we should take a look at each grant, and if they do have Agenda 21 items attached to them, if we can't change the grant and not have to follow the Agenda 21 items, then we should oppose that grant.
I pretty much agree with all of the gentlemen up here. Strings attached, let's not go there, but if there's monies that we need and can use, it's reasonable, I think, for.
This question is for Larry. What is your position on organization charts, both on the website and hard copy, showing employee positions, names, and reporting responsibilities?
Good idea. We have organizational charts for all the different departments, and I think you should go on the website and be able to see it, who's in charge of what, and who is actually the department head and assistant, and on down the line. So I have no problem with it. I think that it's a good idea for the citizens.
This question's for all of you. Do you support or oppose the implementation of Common Core standards in Sutter County? Who's, Mike?
Common Core? I'm against Common Core. I think we need to work within our county and what we want our kids to know so they can be ready out there. We know that our kids aren't being taught the basics even, right, making a budget. These kids go out there and want to rent an apartment for me, they don't even know how to do a budget. I mean, that's the basics. They're teaching things that, that doesn't have to do with making a living or making their way. A budget is the first thing and living within their means, saving for a rainy day. I can hear my dad, you know, saying, save it for a rainy day. And I, so I'm, I'm against Common Core and there's a lot, there's a lot to it to educate ourselves and I urge you to get involved and find out more about Common Core. Thank you.
I've had the opportunity to read some of the Common Core curriculum that has been put into our schools and quite honestly, it's, it's amazing. They have a circle showing 19 apples and they ask you to count to 20. How does that work? I don't know. One was, they were asking if a lady was pregnant and she was having a child and she didn't know who the father was, whether it was the mailman or the postman or the pizza delivery man, how should she be tested? I mean, that's the kind of questions that are not appropriate to be asking fourth grade kids. This Common Core curriculum is an absolute disaster and should be gotten rid of.
I have a real, I have a real problem with Common Core as well. Some of the stories that John has told are true. I've seen some of those things and, you know, Common Core has been implemented, so we need to see what we can do about changing it. My biggest worry is that, you know, this country has prided itself on academic freedom and that's, that's what we built our education system on from the beginning and to implement a, a standard where instructors have to follow this specific standard on everything. I know I'm speaking to some instructors as well. They feel like they're just highly regulated with Common Core that...